We're going to start the public hearing. So I'll call the public hearing order. Sit down, sit down. Now, we're turning it over to Mr. Bellisle for our district-wide safety plan.
Great. Well, thanks for having me back again this year. It's an annual event. So just what I'd like to do is open this public hearing for the Amherst School Safety Plan. What I'd like to do this year is go a little bit over some of the updates with regards to the district safety plan, but also talk a little bit about the emergency response plans that requirement is around the safety plan. However, the emergency response plans are intricately connected to that with regards to building actions. And I'll go over those a bit as we move forward. So just briefly, and you might remember this from the prior year, but all of this really is driven by two major laws. One, Section 2801A of New York State law, as well as Section 807. Section 2801A talks about the safety planning is driven by those statutory requirements that were added in 2016. Section 807 discusses a bit about our fire emergency drills that we're so used to we've been having for decades and decades. Of course, those have been updated as we've gone through. However, one of the other requirements is, of course, our hearing this evening, which is one of the requirements from Section 2801A. So a bit of some background. So Schools Against Violence in Education, I think we all remember that back from 2000, it drove a number of things, including planning, required trainings, fingerprinting of our employees as they come on, updates to our code of conduct. That did a great deal of this work, but again, the statutory requirements that came in 2016 is what really drove the requirement around school safety plans and our use of the incident command system and the language that we use, similar to our essential elements. We have a consistent language for our safety plan, and I'll review that again here shortly. But again, the goals here are to prioritize safety planning and preparedness, as well as reduce any risks. And of course, one of the big goals here is to increase our relationships with fire, safety, and emergency management, which of course we've done, I think, a pretty good job with, and I think we have a pretty good relationship with. I'll just note real quick, this summer, and Ms. McLaughlin's on our district-wide safety too, so I'm pointing at her, but I also will note that this summer, our emergency management folks, as well as our SRO, came to our cabinet meeting this summer with Mr. Pennell and all of our administrators, and was able to engage in some updated tabletop activities to run through our emergency response plans and our safety plans to ensure that there's a good understanding. It's not something you have a lot of practice with, so it's something you should spend some time on, knowing that, thank goodness, you don't have a lot of practice with. So some of those statutory amendments back in 16 have been updated along the way as well, but some of the heavy hitters here include the requirement to communicate and contact parent guardians in the case of any direct violence, including any threats of suicide among any of our students. Adult training, which occurs every year at our opening day training. The last few years have been a bit more electronic because of COVID, but we've been doing this ever since. This year, we're updating some of our mental health training, so you see it highlighted here. In the past, we've really focused incredibly heavy on some of the mental health first dates, suicide, safety for teachers, and some of those other mental health trainings, not just for our employees, but also for some of our students. This last year, we were, actually, Mr. Pennell and I were looking through some of the documents that are out there and noted that there are some additional essential components that exist that were somewhat hidden in the law, so we're able to add some of those this year. So now, our training this year will be updated to incorporate both mental health first dates, suicide, safety for teachers, DASSA, as well as some of the additional state requirements, which had 12 components that mostly drive around mental health diagnoses and needs, such as obsessive compulsive disorder, anxiety disorder, et cetera, but also who to go to and who to contact. They were part of our plans, but they weren't necessarily identified clearly, so we've made sure to include that for our training system this upcoming year, which occur on the first day of new teachers returning to us on the 30th. The other requirement is the designation of a chief emergency officer and a district safety committee. I am that individual, and Mr. Romparo and I co-chair the district safety committee. We are required to have updated policies and procedures relative to emergency situations and a consistent language, and that's where the incident command system language comes in, and I'll review that here momentarily. And of course, the 12 drills, drills we're all used to, those eight evacuation drills, not as fire drills, as well as those lockdown drills that are required in schools. So I'll just touch base briefly on these building-level emergency response teams, just because they're so connected. So just like we have a district-wide safety committee, we're also required to have building-level emergency response teams. So these are the smaller breakout groups within each building that know the plans in those buildings much more intricately, where our district-wide safety committee focuses on sort of the big umbrella around the requirements that are needed throughout the district. Some of the membership you see in some of the buildings include what you see listed here, our teachers, administrators, parent organizations, parents in general, our school safety personnel. Our SRO is on each team, as well as our emergency management services. What that does is it starts to create that relationship within each building with those community members, not just one building, where I see a lot of districts, they focus their time on the high school because the needs are so much greater there, but what we do here is make sure that that emergency management and our SRO is on each committee every fall and every spring, so they meet twice a year. Again, planning and collaboration is the key in those relationships. So what you see within each building is not just the team, but also roles, and again, you don't practice these as frequently as you do everything else, so it's important, when the time comes, to be efficient and timely, knowing that time is of the essence when you're in any emergency. So what we have, and we've had this here for perhaps about seven years now, are these role binders at the district level, and about five years ago, we added them at the building level. And what each principal has is a binder that aligns with each role under the incident command system, and Mr. Pennell also has a set of these binders in his office as well from a district perspective. So each administrator reviews these roles and requirements with each member on their team, but what he or she has available to them are those binders, so when the time comes, those just get handed out. And if by chance someone happens to be out or sick or directly involved with an incident, they have backups, they hand those to. So again, what's nice here is you don't necessarily read these day in and day out, so if you're ever in a situation where you're one of these roles, you open that up, and what you find in there is information about the students, information about the kids, ways in which to communicate, as well as your roles, responsibilities, and necessary paperwork that you can follow through in that time, again, to make sure that anyone who fills those roles is doing so efficiently and in a timely manner. So I will move forward just a little bit here and talk a little bit about the comparison between the district safety plans and four emergency response plans, again, one per building. Just to put a visual to it, so the district-wide safety committee drives the decisions with the district-wide safety plan you see here tonight. It's also on the website. The building-level emergency response team drive the changes to their own plans, but also designate two teams, the emergency response team, as well as the post-incident response team. Now, you'll find that the membership is very, very similar, but we make sure that we include all of our PPS staff in particular on the post-incident, knowing that there might be some needs there from a mental perspective as well. So in terms of the major differences, the district-wide plan, of course, is much more broad, as I mentioned, whereas the building level is much more detailed, specific to what exactly the building administrators and the building post-incident, as well as the response team do in a moment of crisis. The other difference is, of course, the district-wide covers district-wide policies and general topics such as DASSA and code of conduct, whereas the building level talks about how specific individuals respond in this situation, as well as details on an evacuation. Knowing that those details are in there, of course, that those plans remain confidential, and you will not find it on our website, and of course, I'm not discussing it tonight, but I am just sharing with you in general, so you're aware of how those pieces work. The district plan, however, is on our website, and at the end, I'll show you, it's been on our website, if you recall, it requires 30-day comment period. That comment period ends in two days, and what I'll share at the end, of course, is you are then required to approve the district-wide safety plan, and that will be on your agenda publicly for August 23rd. These are the general components of the district-wide safety plan, and again, these are on the website, and I have a hyperlink there for you, and I can share it again in your weekly update. The one addition last year, if you might recall, is Appendix 1, which is our district-wide communal disease continuity of operations plan, which is a multiple, I just called it our pandemic plan. If and ever we were in that moment, again, we were required to add that as part of our district-wide safety plan, so that is in there as of last year. The two updates for '22, '23, however, include, first, a section in Section 4.1 that was driven by Alyssa's Law, and you may recall Alyssa's Law was driven by a victim from RJ Stoneman Douglas incident back in 2018. Alyssa was a 14-year-old student, and the family and many around them drove some changes to law, which included the consideration of a panic button, which is a silent alarm that allows for that information, if there was ever an incident, to then go silently and quickly to emergency management services, police, first responders, et cetera. So that is something that's in our plan, is something we are including in our work, and you may know from your experience with our Smart Schools Bond Act, we're looking closely at adding on those PA systems at all buildings, and this would play a part within that system. The other addition is a requirement actually next year, which is a formal remote instruction plan. Of course, Dr. Shanahan spent a little bit of time over the last few years helping develop that with our team, so she's covering for me downstairs, I think, at the door, so she'll be up in a second, so she already knows this work is coming. We've had a great deal of conversations, Mr. Pennell actually shared some guidance on just a bit ago as well. But the requirements around a remote instruction plan are now included within our school safety plan as well, and the four components that you see in the bottom are the required components, one of which is availability of devices and internet, which of course we already provide, expectations on the time spent in remote instruction if we were to go that way at any time. If remote instruction wasn't appropriate, then what would you provide otherwise? And of course, the last is the provision of special education or related services such as speech, OT, PT, et cetera. So that is to come next year, so looking forward to your sneak peek into the future presentation. On our website, as I mentioned, is our district-wide safety plan. We put that up almost a month ago. As I said, the comment period ends in two days, and at that time, if we have no comments, which I have not received on it thus far, then it will go as whole to your board agenda for August 23rd for your approval, which would then be required to be in place by September 1, which it would be at that point, and we're required to submit those to New York State by October 1, which is an annual requirement. And that is about it. Unless there are any questions.
Mr. Bellisle, just a thing about when I developed the building safety plan for a summit, one of the things we went, and hopefully never have to use this, so those binders just gather dust. But in each one of the role binders in the front pocket, we had eight different colored vests with the job title in front and back, so should there be a backup immediately, the team know who is who, and then as the outsiders start pushing in, the Amherst Police who knows what the A-rolls are, or the EMTs of the fire department, and they're looking for the logistics person, there's logistics person, it says here, in here, and whatever, they're orange. So we bought these vests for pennies and tucked them in the front pocket of the binder, so if Mr. Pidge is the incident commander for the high school, and he's not there now, Mr. Lonzak is, he's got the incident commander vest on. So we have a role clarity immediately amongst the team as to who's who, and then again, as people push in, and they know who they're looking for, and oh, the press is here, or is the information officer, liaison, whoever you assign that to.
Right. Communication, yeah, there's so many.
Yeah, just something to think about.
It's great feedback, I appreciate it.
Silent panic buttons, where does that silent alarm go?
Well, so there's a lot to that, we're just looking into investigating that. Now, there's options where they can be in your cell phone, it can be within the office, it can be in multiple places. That goes, depending on the software used, goes directly to the administrators to communicate to them that there's something going on, and you can choose, is my understanding, with Mr. Bellisle's feedback, because we're working with him closely on the PA system to ensure that that system holds a good response with a panic button. But the most important thing is it would then be directly connected to Amherst Police, so that they're aware of what's going on, and that they can respond that much quicker than, as we all know, time is of the essence, just a minute or two makes a huge difference.
Yeah, my request at minimum is I want it to do two things, but I think it'll have, what we're looking at will have greater capability, but at minimum, I want it to announce to the building that we are in lockdown, and then I also want it to dial to the police. Because, you know, in a situation, an emergency situation, we don't have time to pick up the phone and call on the PA and say, hello, the building, we are now going into lockdown, and then hang that up, and then dial, you know, 911. So I want it to be able to do two things, trigger the building to go into a lockdown, and also contact the appropriate authorities.
So in that instance, it's not really silent, right? And they wouldn't know, the person maybe wouldn't know who pushed it, but they would know that there was something over the PA saying that there was one, right?
Yeah, I just want, I want to be able to cut out, you know, like Mike said, as time is of the essence, I want to be able to cut out as many unnecessary steps as possible. I'm not sure if silence is necessary, I think getting the communication out is the most important thing with the push of a button.
So to just clarify what you're saying, I think the half of it is the silent, communication out to the police is the silent, the piece that we already do is why we do our practices, right, our lockdown drills. This just stops, as Mr. Pennell pointed out, from the principal or assistant principal having to find a phone and do it, it just automatically provides that information, so we kind of added that on to remove a piece to make it more efficient, the silent piece is the piece to the emergency management services and the police.
I think what we've seen in tragedies that have occurred in, you know, our country is a lot of damage can unfortunately be done in minutes in one classroom. So the goal would be to get all of our classrooms locked down as soon as possible, so that we don't have somebody enter into a room that, you know, while we're trying to signal the building that the doors need to be locked.
Thank you for the feedback, I appreciate it. I'll bring that back.
Could you close the public hearing?
I would like to close the public hearing.
Thanks. Close. I'd like to call the regular reading order. If you could stand and say to your left, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. This is Custody, do we have any visitors, I shouldn't just speak?
No.
Okay. We have no written communication, reports of boards and committees. Mrs. Ernst did take her oath as vice president this morning, so we are good to go. Mr. Smith, can you give us a report on the audit committee meeting?
Sure. July 28th, the host of Ms. Bezinski, we have the audit committee meeting. As points, our team is the same as in the past, Carl Whitmer, Charles Tratier, Ed Kerber, and Matt Malaski. Okay. And I like to bring in a new person every year, so this year it was a woman named Daisy Chance, so she'll get the notice. Some of the standard issues that we cover, there are dependents, reports hasn't changed in past years, the audit plan is consistent with past years, the committee is going to meet on September 28th with the audit team, and then the presentation is October 4th, is whatever it's done. So we'll all hear about it on October 4th. I think the new area of focus this year, I'm not going to re-set all the acronyms, because I don't know if I can, are all the different buckets of funding ready to cope with, and how have we appropriated those hours, consistent with what the grant defined. The other probably load relief for Mr. Bezinski and our team during COVID, they created an interface with district accounting software, so they could audit remotely, and now when they're on site, they'll bring that tool with them, so they won't have to interface with Mr. Bezinski's staff as much, don't face many requests for, can we have this, can we have that, because they can audit it right there from, I guess it'll be in this room. So not that they're being pestered, but they'll be pestered less.
Capital Project Committee meeting, we had yesterday afternoon. We got back together, we met in July previously, and essentially have been narrowing down $200 million worth of potential work, down to 120, down to a number yet to be determined based on the different projects that we're trying to get into this. Going through, each building has a maximum cost allowance that you have to be cognizant of, so, and what's covered with, you know, state aid, what isn't, that we'd have to pay 100% at the local level, so we're meeting again next week to go over more numbers. We bring in Rick Gancy, our financial guy, to, you know, work with us, and we will be reporting on, hopefully, to the board at our next board meeting, which we scheduled for 23rd, to kind of give you an overview of the project that we're looking to support as a committee and bring it to the board, you know, to move forward, so that's the, I get that all right, Mrs. Bezinski?
Yes.
Perfect. The next item, I guess, is mine as well, building visits, I think we've all determined September 1st at 4 o'clock, is it?
Yeah.
To do our annual tours of all the buildings, so I guess it'll be a good time, and we'll be able to see maybe some of the capital work to be, that wants to happen.
Are you splitting up, or are you going as a group?
As a group. Yeah, we typically start at Windermere, go to Smallwood, Middle School, and then end at the high school. Pleased to welcome Dr. Shanahan to give us an update on our summer programming. As you know, one of the uses of our federal stimulus dollars was to enhance our summer programming, not only from a quantity perspective of the number of students participating, but also in the length and the duration of what we're offering, but also from a quantity perspective as well. So Dr. Shanahan, similar to last year at this time, is here to give you an update on our summer programming.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to give you an update. We're in year or two of having this funds available to provide instruction to our students K through 12, to try to close some of those learning gaps and not have summer slides occur on top of that, so we're really excited about what we've been able to put together so far. So tonight, I'm going to share with you all three levels. Elementary just finished last week for their six weeks, middle and high school are finishing this week. So once again, we intentionally chose to run summer school at both schools and not pull it into one, because we felt it would help increase attendance if it was in its community. So we held summer school at Windermere and Smallwood. We held it for six weeks. We gave three options for flexibility for families, so you could come for the entire six weeks, you could come for the first three weeks, or the last three weeks, so there were options based on people's summer schedules. We went Monday through Fridays, and we started at 8:10, and we finished at 11:30. However, we wanted to make sure there weren't barriers to students attending, so two things that I worked with Mrs. Bezinski on, and some of our funding through the CHRISA stimulus funding, was having afternoon childcare, because we have many families that work, and having your child done 11:30 is not very convenient for pickup. So we worked for Just For Kids, and we ran that at Windermere. They had the staffing to run it at one site only, so we provided busing from Smallwood to Windermere for any students that needed it. We paid for 60 slots through the grant, so if there were economic issues, why you could not afford childcare at that point, and that would be a reason why you wouldn't come, we removed that barrier as well. The goal was to get as many students who were in need of further instruction into the school without exterior barriers being in the way. So we provided transportation, I worked with Mrs. Bezinski to make sure that we had transportation to school in the morning, home from school at 11:30. If you chose to stay for the after-school program, or I say after-school, afternoon childcare, you get from Smallwood with a bus to Windermere, and then pickup after that was on the parents to do that. When they stayed for Just For Kids, the other thing I wanted to mention was that the parents could extend from 4:30 to 5:30, but that they had to pay for on their own, that wasn't something that the district was able to do, but they could arrange that, so I thought that was Just For Kids, work with families on a one-to-one basis to try to make sure that the children could attend, so that was a really good partnership for us. So our attendance was 60 at Smallwood, 133 at Windermere. We had 67 last year at Smallwood, so we were down seven, but we had 102 the previous year at Windermere, so we had an increase of 31 students attending, it shifted in pool attended, you know, school base. What I'd like to do, instead of just having you listen to me, is actually get to look inside just a little bit, so I, we have a short video clip with the directors, the two directors, each building has a director that works with their administration in the building, so the administrators can continue to get ready for the fall, and there can be continuous support for families in the summer school and our students. So I'm going to let them share a little bit with you, and you'll get to see some of the students and teachers discuss programming.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Swelk, Director of Summer School at Windermere. And I'm Jennifer Higgins, the Director of Summer School at Smallwood. Summer learning at Smallwood and Windermere is designed to help children fill in the learning gaps, prevent that summer slide, and to help them for success in the fall. Our summer learning is engaging, hands-on, and consistent with our best practices during the traditional school year. I focused on the kindergarten science unit, weather and climate, specifically focusing on high-end standard K, PS3 tool, using tools and materials to design and build a structure that will reduce the warming effect of sunlight on an area. How do we protect our animals from the sun? Students are then tasked with designing and creating a structure to protect the animals from the sun.
Oh, and Al, while she's reading, I want you to point to your words, okay? We have been working on strategic reading and writing strategies this summer by reinforcing them, so that they become better for their fourth grade in this upcoming year. So today, we did a counting collection lesson. Last week, I attended a professional development at Smallwood, where we learned how to teach students through counting collection. Counting collections are awesome for students to experience real-life counting, and they are in charge of their thinking. It's teacher-directed, but students make their own choices. Do you want to do it?
I counted by tens, like, that's bigger.
How come you chose not to put these in?
Because I want it. If I put more, I'm going to lose more, that'll make more, I'll get ten.
So tell me how many you have in the whole room, I'm sorry.
I have sixty, ten's altogether.
Sixty times together?
No.
Hmm. I only see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, it'll be like this, huh?
Ten.
Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. So I mean, the value of it is. Okay, so you have sixty here.
Each day, we start with a morning meeting, where students greet each other, they answer how they're feeling today on a fist of five, a zero, meaning that they're not feeling so well, a five, they're feeling great and they're ready to learn. We've been learning strategies for reading instruction, math, science, and writing. Students in math have been working on place review, where they have been playing beat the teacher. So students were given number cards, and they had to then place the numbers in the correct place on their sheet to try to create a larger number than nine. In writing, students have been working for the past three weeks about opinion, so students were given questions about would they rather swim at the beach or swim at the ocean.
We are in the middle of our unit covering properties of materials. The students have been experimenting and discussing with different properties of materials, such as plastic, metal, and paper. Today, they are testing the strength properties of paper by building a house out of paper and testing its integrity.
Summer school provides students the opportunity to interact, communicate, and cooperate with peers and teachers in a small, unique, and focused learning environment.
So a couple things just to share, is you'll notice there are not a lot of screens. That was intentional planning, K through 12. We wanted students off of devices, they've spent an awful lot of time on screens. So we did, we did do intentional planning around using objects, reading books, writing with papers, they're going to get plenty of time on their computers, so there was an intentional planning there, as well as, we looked at the students who were attending, and we spoke with their classroom teachers around skills and strategies that they needed to work on. And so all of the planning in literacy, in math, in science, were intentional based on students' needs. And for, you know, staffing is an issue, so we did have some folks from outside of our own district in their teaching, and what we did there was, we put a coach in each building that worked with those teachers weekly, they planned with them, and they helped them, you know, make sure that they understood the student needs, and they were executing the instructions, so we had some internal coaching going on by some of our more expert teachers in the district. So the planning and the lessons that were, I always say, coming to summer school is great, but if it's not strong instruction, then it's not as good as it could be, and we won't be closing gaps. So we were very intentional in curriculum planning for that short amount of time. So that gives you a little glimpse as to what occurred, and I don't want to start the video again, and I did anyways. There we go. So every, you know, a pandemic has a silver lining, and a silver lining happened with open library this year. So in January, we start planning summer school, because it takes a while.
So in January, we start planning summer school because it takes a while to pull this off and get everything going. And I had this question, would you ever consider using some of this money to open libraries up so our students have access to books in the summer right within their own communities? And so we said, well, what would that look like for you? What would you like to do? And I was speaking with Mr. Prozier and Mrs. Flanagan about this because this had come up from their library media specialist. So we did. We ran two different pilots. They looked a little bit different based on people's availability. One was on Windermere. Windermere opened every Friday the library to their, not just the students, students and their family. So if you notice, there's adults, I'm not sure how, well, you can see in the back, but you'll see in the video in a minute, there's adults sitting in the back. So the goal was to increase relationships with students and families. It could be a caregiver, it could be a babysitter, but they needed to be an adult with you. It wasn't a drop-off type of program. So we did this at Windermere and I just have, I would like to just share with you briefly some feedback we got from one of our families at Windermere. And this was through an email to Mrs. Flanagan.
Hello, Ms. Flanagan. I want to thank you for the Community Fridays program and opening up the library to the community. My son is usually overwhelmed with public libraries, but because of Community Friday's smaller and familiar environment, he's been able to look for books and pick up books for summer reading. I also want to thank the librarian who was sweet and encouraging to my child. I sneaked her a picture. I hope it's okay to show how comfortable he was with sitting down and looking for books. Even though we are sad that next week would be the last week, thank you for this wonderful program. Best regards.
So we did find that to be very powerful. This idea originated with our new library media specialist out of Smallwood. Because being new to the district, she said, I really want to develop relationships with families. So she, she asked for a little bit more robust, can I go three days a week? I want to, you know, I really want to get to know the families in the community and I want to increase literacy as well. So I'm going to share with you what their program looked like a little bit.
The Tosis family got a big reward for turning in the crooks and soon. Over the summer, I was able to keep the library open three days a week for students and families to come in to enjoy some STEAM activities, storytime, and literacy activities. Having the library open over the summer gave me the opportunity to build relationships with families and students. It gave families and students the opportunity to build those literacy routines coming in weekly to look for books that they enjoy. Keeping the library open over the summer also gave me the opportunity to promote a love of reading with students and their families. Some of the activities we did included having the aquarium come. We did some rocket launching, some escape boxes. The Amherst Police came to read a story and talk about summer safety tips. We did some Azabat coding and many storytimes. My goal over the summer was to really promote a love of reading with families. Having students in here showing their families where their favorite books are really helps me reach that goal.
We loved coming to the library. We came multiple times and it was such a wonderful experience to stay connected with the school in the summertime. And Quinn is going to be going off to kindergarten. And so, Quinnie, why don't you tell them what you liked about coming to the library?
My favorite, dating books, and cuddling some stuff.
And getting used to your new school. And Doc, what did you think?
So this book has a lot of great ideas about some legos. You can make like anything you want.
That's very good. That's a great book and that's a new book.
Yeah.
This is C J since you just got it here. So we loved it. It really gave us our connection to school in the summertime. Thank you for having us.
So kind of a silver lining unplanned generated from our faculty. And I have to say that Windermere, our library media specialist works in the high school and we're required to have a certified librarian in the high school. So this kind of percolated up in the middle of the year and we said, we'll try it. So I'm not sure where this will go for next year, but it sounds like it was a nice way to get community involvement, develop relationships, and, you know, allow people to come right to a school they could, for many of them, they could walk to to get their books. So we'll see where this goes in the future, but it's rather exciting. So see, a positive thing from all of this craziness lately. So I'm going to shift to the middle school. The middle school, as I said, and high school are still completing this week. They ran July eleventh to August eleventh, Monday through Thursday. Last year we had a great deal of waste with food when we offered breakfast and lunch and cleaning it up in interesting places. So we decided that grab-and-go snacks was a better way to go. And that seemed to be, so far, that's been much better because they can come in between classes and grab on the way in or on the way out. So we've done shorter, I mean, smaller, little grab-and-go snacks and that seems to have been much more efficient for the students. And part of that is you'll notice there's three arrival and dismissal times because it depends how many classes they have to come in for. So they might, you know, they might not come in until ten fifteen and they really don't need breakfast, right? So we offered the shuttle service a little bit more effectively, I think, this year as well as opportunities for kids to grab something as they came in the door and they could take it to class and eat, et cetera. So that, that was how that schedule kind of went with busing and transportation. Attendance-wise, we had a hundred and fifty-eight, which was a slight increase. Sorry, I'm going to double-check my numbers before I give out wrong information here. A hundred and fifty-eight and it was seventeen more from the previous year. Eighth grade was a little bit higher, but the eighth grade class, we call it a little bit of a bubble class. Their enrollment is a little over fifty higher. It's just a big class. So we're, and if you look at seven and eight are increased a little bit and we're watching that too because they were hit, you know, pretty dramatically by the pandemic and they were in transition between fifth and sixth. So we're watching those numbers as well. Core courses and language in case, you know, we want to make sure they get that language credited if they're going over to the high school as well. And I'll show a short clip with you from the director and a couple of activities that went on. By the way, you'll see two young ladies that get interviewed in this. They got so nervous the first day, they came back the next day and got Mrs. Sincle and said, we've been thinking about what we want to say. And could you please just come back and video us? So she did go back kindly and grabbed them. They were very excited.
The Amherst Middle School Summer Skills Program is provided for students in grades fifth through eighth grade who have been identified by their teachers as maybe needing more academic support. We want our students to be more successful in the upcoming school year. So we provide not only academics, but we provide behavioral support. We provide social skills and we just want to give our students better opportunities to be more successful in the upcoming school year.
Hi, I'm Renee Marko and I'm the Summer Skills Instructor for the incoming sixth-grade math students this summer at Amherst High School. And we are working these twenty days on content that works on connecting fifth-grade math to sixth-grade math. And we work on skills that bridge the fifth-grade curriculum, things like corrections and decimal work and help prepare them for sixth-grade learning. It closes gaps in learning summer slide, minimizing summer slide and helping close those gaps, but also push the learning and help front-load content that they might see in sixth-grade math. So things like today we were running about the coordinate plane. In fifth-grade math, they learn how to graph coordinates in the first quadrant. And today we did a quick review of that, but also pushed the content to graph coordinates in all four quadrants.
Mrs. Markle made that so much fun. I really enjoyed doing that and I'm really excited for sixth grade and review of sixth-grade math. And it's fun, yes.
I'm very excited for sixth grade year. To make sixth, they can work easier and I'd like to better.
So I'm Kirsten Cole and I am teaching eighth grade ELA in summer school. Currently, we are reading a graphic novel written by Jason Reynolds. It's The Long Way Down. The kids are absolutely loving it. They're enjoying it. And we're just working on a lot of foundational skills necessary for ninth grade, high school, and beyond. Currently, right now, they're working on a mind map where they're building off of different characterization methods, plot structure. As you can see, they're working through, right now, we're working on symbolism and little literary elements, all necessary and essential for next year.
So once again, we tried to reduce screen time, increase active engagement through discussion, higher-level thinking, and actually hands-on types of activities in the middle school. So high school, same date as middle school, July eleventh to August eleventh, Monday through Thursday. Snacks included. Their bus times were slightly different, but we still did a rotational schedule to get kids in when they needed to be in and out when they were done. We had less students this year, so we had eighty-three students this year. They invited eighty-nine and eighty, eighty-nine and eighty-three actually showed. They're trying to recover a hundred and fifty-nine course credits is the goal. And it was, it's a decrease of thirty-five students from the year before, which makes me really happy about that. Because we don't, you know, we want to be, sorry, successful during the school year, not making enough credits in the summer. Once again, core subjects similar to last year that we need students to be successful in. And then Mr. Longzak will take you through the high school to summarize.
We're really happy to have in-person summer school back at Amherst High School for the second year in a row this summer. It's been going great with over eighty-five kids in attendance in really, really small class sizes. Our faculty has been great. They really stepped up to the plate to make sure we have a great personalized experience for our students that is primarily, if not all, in-person, screen-free. We have class sizes of about eight to nine and that really allows teachers and students to work one-on-one to make sure that we're closing the key academic gaps that they need to focus on to be successful for next school year and beyond. Along with that is obviously our focus on educating the whole child in a social-emotional learning. We're pleased to have a full-time counselor on staff and also make sure we're incorporating CL activities, some small community building circles, and making sure that students ultimately have a positive experience overall to make sure that they're coming back next school year and they're being hopefully more successful than they were in the past. It's been going great. We have breakfast, we have snacks available to them each and every day. We're checking in, we're fist-pumping them in hallways. And we're still, most importantly, working towards those key credits to keep them on track for graduation and to make sure that they're having that positive Amherst Central High School experience that we're hoping all of our students can have. So it's a little bit of our summer school and we're pleased to have it back here at high school again this year.
And I'll express to you how the high school has done credit recovery prior to COVID. And the one thing that they have really felt was valuable was being able to offer these robust more classes where kids are coming in and not doing credit recovery so much on a computer program that's still in place. Because for some kids, that's the best way for them to attack this, but now they have two options. So I'll go on, hold on. For questions, I, you know, we've done, I think the building administrators have done a really good job of working to put a program together that would meet students' needs, be engaging, and make summer school a place that they would want to come. And we'll see where this goes next year. So I don't know if there are any questions?
With the high school students, in years past, the twelfth-grade students, the credit recovery has allowed them to graduate. Is that the same with the ones that were there?
Yeah, same thing. Yeah, exactly the same. And I think there were five seniors this year, so, you know, that's.
Are we, as in some years past, pre-COVID, holding like a special, like little graduation for them like we have in the past or?
That's an excellent question that I would need to look up. I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know if Tony knows anything about that or graduation?
Yeah, I know what Paul's referring to, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we're planning to do the in-person ceremony this summer. I know we didn't do it last year, so I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, we can, we can ask Mr. Pigeon what he's going to do if he has a question.
Thank you, Dr. Shanahan. And thank you for all your hard work and coordinating the robust summer programming. The next item I wanted to take a look at is our board topics for the year. As you know, since you've all been on the board for multiple years, we present this to you as a draft at this point. And as things emerge, we typically add them as needed. President Steinle and Vice President Erst and I meet every Thursday before the Tuesday board meetings to set the agenda. So this is a guideline we use and there's a lot of flexibility with it. I will point out the August twenty-third meeting is on here. So mark your calendars, same place, same time, seven PM, August twenty-third for the added meeting. At that meeting, as Mr. Steinle had mentioned, we hope to have a capital project that we can present to you in broad terms. You know, our goal would be to present an overall budget for a project as well as what the anticipated tax, or impact on the taxpayers might be and to get the board's feedback relative to moving forward or not moving forward with that project. I also plan to have, there's a talk you may have heard recently that the CDC is going to update its guidelines for COVID protocols in schools for the upcoming school year. I'm also being told that we may get a memo from either the State Education Department or the State Department of Health relative to COVID protocols. Everything I'm seeing about those two entities and what they may issue, I think, represents positive news because it reflects in general terms, you know, more of a return to normalcy for the students in the school and very few protocols or restrictions as we've seen in the past. So if I have information, more information to share, I plan to do that on the twenty-third. So don't forget about the meeting on the twenty-third, that's an added one. The rest of them here, I'm willing to take feedback now if you have topics that you would like to see. If not, you know, we also have a mechanism for you to request the topic being placed on the agenda by contacting one of the board officers prior to us setting the agenda.
We have a capital project. One of those, Paul, do you like to go over it more?
Yeah, we, we have.
Like September, October?
Yeah, we will definitely have to add those in here as we approach the vote date to give more details about the scope. That's a good point.
I know there's the C crow, right?
Yeah. And as we get past the August twenty-third, we'll start to plot those in here. Thank you for that. Okay. That's all I have for the superintendent's report tonight. At some point though, you'll see on the back page, we do have the opportunity to have a board retreat. If that's something we would like to do. We are working with our administrative team and our strategic planning committee to revise and update our strategic plan. So one of the things that might be beneficial for us to do in a retreat format is review a draft of the strategic plan after it's already gone through our administrative review and then we're getting the over forty-person committee together shortly after school starts in mid-September to review it again. And we hope to have revised action items that we can review with all of you in a retreat format. That's one idea. So I can continue to work with Paul and Jean on the potential for a board retreat and the timing around that. But we've normally done that in October. And typically we do it in between the two meetings. So, you know, looking at this, that might be somewhere around October eleventh. You know, or could be after, in between the October and November meeting, but just keep that in the back of your mind. Thank you. I see your watch says it's time to stand.
Yeah. Not getting my steps in right now.
Since we're a full disclosure, we have identity this evening.
Well, we can get up and jog around right now if you want. I will need a motion for new business items.
Make a motion for new business items, F1, A through G, 2, A through E, 3, E through H.
I'll make a motion for new business items, F1A through G, 2A through E, 3E through H.
We have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, F1A through G, 2A through E, and 3E through H, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. With that, I would like to welcome some new team members to Amherst School District here. Maybe you could each stand and tell us who you are and where you're going to teach. Start from the left. Mr. Chazen, you were a popular one already, so. Welcome back, I should say, I guess, so.
Sure, thank you. After seven years at Smallwood and Windermere, teaching orchestra in fourth and fifth grade, I am returning to the high school to teach orchestra to our ninth through 12th grade.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Look forward to having you back.
I am Karen Kibler. I am new to the Amherst School District. I come from Buffalo Public Schools, and I will be the new assistant principal at the high school level.
My name is Hillary Venish. After a brief stay at home with my kiddos, I'm returning to teaching eighth-grade science in the school.
My name is Taylor Balzer. I am an Amherst alumni, and I've been at Smallwood the last two years, and I will be the special education administrative co-teacher at Smallwood in first grade this year.
You're already here.
Yes.
Well, welcome in a new role, I guess.
Is that mom clapping?
Yeah.
She was very excited to come and asked, and I said yes. I was coming anyways.
That's right.
Good job, mom.
Thank you.
We would all do that, so. Mrs. Cosoni, do we have any follow-up action?
Yes, we're going to look into it. There will be an August graduation this year, and we will add capital project presentations to the board at times.
Okay. With that, we will need to, a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss matters regarding contract decisions.
Do a second.
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.